Hello, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. I'm live right here. This is, of course, as you can see here, the Strip, believe it or not. And I'm just gonna be taking a look at this, obviously. There are all these different candles, everything. Wow, this is unbelievable. Can you believe this? My favorite city, my favorite metropolitan area, goes through this load of nonsense. You know, those of you who hate Las Vegas, this is probably your lucky day, I have to tell you, my friend. This is so sick, this is so disgusting. Who do you think you are? You think you can come out here and spread such BS? It's a big insult to this valley. It's a big insult to me and what I stand for and what I want to do here. And it's a big disgrace that you can see right here. So, I'm looking at right here. You got all these candles, right here. You have the street that's basically just locked out, as you could see here. I don't think they can let us go any further. I probably can cross the street, kinda get a little bit of a bird's eye view. And I don't know if I can... I don't know if you guys can see which hotel suite actually got damaged or was really broken into. So, this is just really, really unbelievable. And you can see here, there's vast amounts of literally news agencies. I believe I even saw ABC 7 from Los Angeles. So, they have traveled all the way down here and they've actually looked in to see what is going on. So, you know, I just have to say, honestly, there's a lot of thoughts in my head. I can't really say it into the public. I can go in conspiracies and all this stuff, but I don't want to do it. But... This is just tragic, my friend. This is just tragic. Oh, look at here. What do you know, gas isn't so expensive. So... I'm just speechless, believe it or not. The area that is literally the entertainment capital of the world, that has literally has brought so much value, so much honor. Now we take the highest rank for shooting. Can you believe this? Can you believe this? I'm a man who wants to build master plan developments. I want to build beautiful neighborhoods, 30, 60 miles on the outskirts of Las Vegas. Do you think this affects me? Of course it does. How am I gonna market this to families? This is just absolutely harsh. This is unbelievable. And I just think to myself, where were all these mass shootings a decade or two ago? So, you can see right here, there are lots and lots of cop cars. I think this is where the Highway 91 Festival was located. It was located way over there, across from the Mandalay Bay. And I believe the shots came from this hotel. I don't know which wing it was.
Exactly 24 hours from this minute.
Yeah, exactly. Do you mind if I...
Sure.
Yeah. Exactly 24 hours?
Right.
So...
About 10:07, 10:08 last night is, uh... Right now, from right now, is exactly when everything happened.
Oh my gosh. This is just shocking.
At this time last night is when you heard all the bullets spray and all the chaos.
You know, the thing was, if I was at that event, I don't even know if it was fireworks or if there was a, like, one of those building explosions. You know how several years ago, they imploded the Hacienda?
Right.
And they imploded all these? I didn't even know if it was either that or if it was...
I think people...
You know?
I think people that were there last night had no idea. They probably thought it was fireworks. It was getting toward the end of the show. I think it really took a minute until they stopped the music and the stage went black and people really had an idea what was going on.
So, my question is, what does this mean for the future of Las Vegas? What do you think this is gonna have an effect on tourism numbers? On new construction? Will the raiders be postponed? Will there be some kind of... Uh, will there be elected officials that will be resigning and will they be replaced? I mean, I don't think this is looking to look good from what I've read.
I... I think it's, for a while, it's gonna be pretty bad. Things are gonna be down. I think that we will get back on our feet in time. I mean, the raiders aren't coming here for a few, for a couple of years. I think people might be afraid to come out here for a little bit. I think in time, maybe a couple, could be a couple of months, a year from now, or more in the future, that we'll rebound and things will come up again. I... Go ahead.
But we have another catalyst, and that is the housing costs are rising faster than inflation. I don't know if you're... If you live in this valley?
I do.
Okay, and I hope... Let me guess, you live in Henderson?
Uh, no, I live close to here.
Okay.
Have a condo close to the Strip.
Oh, okay, that's good. Yeah, I'm... I try to go further out.
Right.
It's just, I don't know.
I, you know, I know the housing market is great, you know, maybe this might be... Go ahead.
But then again, if it, if prices rise faster than wages and inflation, you know that there's a red alarm. Because there were times where these areas boomed and we didn't have... You know, but, but anyway, we don't want to get off topic, but we have that event, we have this, these could be catalysts. And what's really shocking to me is that a lot of us wanted this area to get back on its feet. We want the boom times to come back.
Right.
We were hoping these guys would open a new tower. There was supposed to be another tower several years ago. It didn't come. It could come, you never know.
Right.
Uh, there are still hopes on the Fountain Blue. There are still hopes on the Resorts World, which was formerly a Shlion Place or the Stardust.
Right, right, Stardust.
And, you know, and then of course, they just came up with this idea. The whole net is starting to come pretty soon, so... But...
I, I think this is a, a big hit that's gonna hurt for a while. Uh, I think things will eventually rebound and get back to normal, but it's gonna take some time. A lot of people love this city. People are still moving here.
I do too.
Yeah.
I think it's one of the world's greatest accomplishments, despite the opposite is true and despite the film industry and a lot of people try to trash it and bring it down and you know, and everywhere has a dark side, but I'm, I'm glad. This is a very unique, and what I really love about it is nothing is normal. Nothing is, everything is one end, extreme, and that's what makes it great.
Yeah, I mean, what a lot of people that don't know, that don't live here, they come here just, uh, for the enjoyment, just for a good time, and, uh, they don't understand that this is a, a community that's very normal off the Strip. Uh, people that attended this event, a lot of them were out of town, but a lot of people that did attend were local. It's a combination of people. And, but I think, uh, I mean, we feel the pain and I think the country and the world feel the pain and it's just, uh, it's a terrible tragedy. I can't even just grasp around it, just looking over here. Inside the event that's blocked off where, where the festival was. I mean, who knows what's in there? Hopefully by now that they cleared the area, but it's still a crime scene if you look at it. The way it was last night, everything is still intact, so...
Yeah. This is probably the closest thing we've ever gotten to 9/11.
Yeah.
This is probably unbelievable. And somebody just commented on my Facebook and says, "Five people from LA County have just passed away." So... This is just... A lot of them were, you know, people from outside of Clark County, so this is just...
I, um, yeah, I just, uh, I mean, the victim, the list of victims are still coming out. Um, it's tragic. I'm really looking to make sure I don't know anybody, but there is, uh... I mean, even, even with that, you just see the faces of these people and the tragedy it is. It's just hard to fathom. And I was just here in this area last night. You know, before, before the concert.
Yeah.
Saw people going in, uh, everybody was dressed for a good time.
Yeah.
And I think that some of the people that, you know, might have walked by me, you know, didn't make it or they're hurt.
Oh, man.
It's hard to, it's hard to grasp.
I guess you can call... Las Vegas has really become the Wild West.
It, it has, and, uh, hopefully, you know, we'll get through this. It's a really, it's just surreal being here right now.
I, I, I just didn't, I never would want it to see this area to have a high ranking in something that's just so unbelievable and but we don't have the highest murder rate in America. We just have the... We don't even, I don't think we rank anything that's really bad. I mean, just that is where we really rank bad. I mean, education, we're probably in the bottom five, but still, you know...
And as, as they say, you know, the Las Vegas Strip is one of the safest places in the world. If you think about all the security and the casinos and how protective they are of this area, but it goes to show you that something like this can happen anywhere and, you know, somebody, if you look at how far, uh, being up in, you know, Mandalay Bay is to where you're, to where the concert is. I mean, you really have to have high-range, uh, you know, weapons, you know, guns to, to shoot and fire on that. You don't have to be a marksman shooter. You have a sea of people, unfortunately. Hopefully they take precautions so that this stuff like this doesn't happen again.
Well, yeah, we're gonna need more protection. I definitely agree. The thing I wanted to point out is, I have hope.
Yeah.
Similar event in LA, when the year I was born, there were riots. Same amount of people got killed and crime levels dropped, and we learned a lot.
Right.
And this could be a scenario for us. I mean, we could see an era where crime goes down and things could really start to really clear up. Anyway, I'm losing a lot of battery. Thank you so much. My name is Cyrus.
Cyrus. Sean, nice to meet you.
If you go to my Facebook, Cyrus992, you can see the live video. And I'd love to hear from, more from you soon.
All right, I will, uh, get you up on Facebook. I'll, Cyrus922?
Cyrus992, so the year I was born.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
Sure, no problem. Stay safe. So, anyway, this is what is really going on. I have some final words. If you guys think you wanna F around in this city, the city that I have future in, the city that, the metro area, that I have so many goals, that I believe in it so much, that I love so much about, okay, go ahead. But you're not gonna stop me. You are not gonna push me around. I'm going to keep striking very, very hard. I'm gonna keep fighting for what I believe in. And you think you can just come here and dump a bunch of garbage? Go ahead, bring it on. And by the way, I'm gonna be very wise to this situation. I'm gonna hear truth from all sides. I'm also gonna be looking at the media too, and the politicians. So, like, the local news media, or even CNN, all these other guys, or even so-called alternative, I'm gonna be watching you. You guys are gonna be exaggerating the stories, all these things. You think you can do that? Go ahead. We're gonna be wise. And then another thing I wanted to point out, I'm gonna be looking at all these politicians. So, all you guys out there, federal officials, Steve Sizilak, Brian Sandoval, I'm gonna be watching how you guys react to this. Caroline Goodman, Deborah Marsh, I'm gonna see how you guys are gonna be reacting to this, okay? And I appreciate your support, and I appreciate all the things you've done. But it's the details that really, really matter, okay? And I've heard a lot of not-so-pretty things about you guys. Anyway... They just basically blocked. There's still all this crime scene and everything, so... See all the cop cars everywhere. They won't let us get in. All right, everybody, take care and wish us a bright future, and we'll pray together. By the way, stay tuned. I will be heading to the county commissioner meeting tomorrow, and I'll be headed to the Henderson City Council meeting tomorrow. So, I'm gonna be looking at some reactions, so stay tuned. Thank you guys so much. Take care. God bless.
Hello, everyone. I'm Cyrus O'Johnny. Hope everybody's doing okay. Everything is safe. First of all, I appreciate everything that you guys have done, but I still have plenty of concerns and issues and important factors that have not been addressed. I've made YouTube videos about this. I've contacted you on Facebook, Mrs. Marsh, regarding this. And this particular issue is housing affordability. Now, yes, it's true that this area, this metro area, is affordable compared to many parts of the country. But it bothers me when you're seeing rent increases and home price increases that are rising faster than inflation and wages. Now, let's go back about 10 years ago. Cause a lot of these things run and they usually have encores. Remember the last time when that happened? When home prices belly up from $150,000 to $300,000? And remember when we saw what happened? Do you really think any of us would want to see that again? Probably not. And yes, of course, this increase is miniscule compared to the last decade. It still bothers me. Because these price increases are much more than they were in the 1990s, 80s, and so forth. During the 1990s...
Hey, everybody. How's everybody doing? Okay, so we're right here in front of the Mandalay Bay. Looks like the hotel rooms have just been restored. And as you can see right here, traffic is back to normal. Businesses as usual. I don't see too much of a memorial right here. You can still see some cop cars. You can still see some tape and everything. But other than that, you know, things are really starting to come back. The lanes are really narrowing down and as you can see here. Wow, this is a horrible tragedy. I have to tell you that. So, this is just very, very depressing, shocking. It is absolutely, absolutely mind-boggling. So, you can see here, the Mandalay Bay, here's a long store. And then this is the Strip right here. I don't see a lot of lights that are being trimmed down at this moment. So, I don't know why this guy keeps honking. I don't know what. I mean, you see all these crazy drivers here. So, basically, as you could see here, there isn't a lot of strips lighting that's actually coming down as a result of all this. So... But there's a lot of police presence around here. And it is kind of frightening to see a lot of police presence. And as you could see, I was expecting a lot of lights to be trimmed down, but apparently I was wrong. So... You know, you can see basically right here. Oh my goodness. This is, this is just shocking. But it's good to see the Strip back in normal. I've heard a lot of working hours have been cut as a result of this aftermath. I'm just curious if it's gonna affect the economy one way or another. I, I really just don't know. It will? Yeah, but I, I, I think, I, I wonder if it'll have an effect on home sales and prices of services? And of course, you know, rents and things like that? So, I hope rents will come down quite a bit, even though it's not that expensive, but you know...
It'll affect the city.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just the mood and the feel of the people have seems like got depressed, you know?
And you're out here on Sunday.
Yeah.
It's not exactly a big party.
And you go, you go everywhere, Centennial, Henderson, all over the neighborhood. You see the mood of the people. And it's just, neighborhoods are dead, absolutely.
I wouldn't say that word.
Unbelievable. So, we're gonna go to some of the sites. I believe some of the candle works has been cleaned up. There are some people saying that if this was done in a different hotel, you know, this tragedy would have not happened. Winn admits that, Steve Winn. But again, you know, we just just have to wait and see, you know?
That would go for me.
Take care. Stay safe, my friend. So, anyway, here's the Strip. There is a good amount of traffic for a Sunday night. I thought it would be quite empty. It's far more busy than I would say last Sunday night or during Monday, where it was pretty, pretty, pretty empty. So, you can see here, now as you can see right here, unlike several days ago, they just opened the gas station. And unfortunately, they are not letting us access the Route 91 Festival where it formerly was located. They're just not letting us do that, so... I don't know, man. It looks like it's just gonna be covered up for the next several days, but if it opens, I'll let you guys know about what happens. So, this is pretty much interesting right here. Unbelievable. You know, what I don't like about this event is it gives people the opportunity to bash Las Vegas. So, if you, if you really hate this place, you're using this opportunity to bring it in the gutter. We'll bring it on. But, y-y-you know, this does not mean we are the lowest common denominator. This does not mean we're the worst place on this earth, or we're the worst in this country. Somebody's talking to me. I don't know if people like to be filmed, but you can see here, you still have some of the candle work a little bit around here. So, we'll take a look right here. You still have some of the candle work. By the way, I'm gonna be, if there's any future events around the neighborhood, I'll take a look at it. So... You can see right here what's going on. And there you have it, my friend. There's the Strip. There is all these amazing hotels. Hopefully, there's gonna be a lot of new exciting developments coming pretty, pretty soon. You know... Yeah, I guess you just have to say, there are crazy people that use certain events as opportunities. And by the way, you know, I've always had a feeling that, you know, something like this could happen. It's because, you know, you see it in movies. I think there are films that portray these things were to happen, you know? This is just not about... I mean, my goodness. This is very, very shocking. Hey, so what do you guys say I do right now? We're in the Strip? Maybe I should talk to some random people? Ooh! Maybe I should compliment? Nah, I don't know. What do you guys think? What do you think I should do in the Strip? So... I live in the Centennial, so I can come here every single day. No big deal. But I still think this is an amazing city, no matter what people think. We have so much potential. I think in some cases, we're very underrated. And I have exciting plans. I have exciting goals. I want to get done here in the next several years and decades. We are gonna make it happen, my friend. Clark County, Las Vegas. We are, or we will be, hopefully, number one in the world. We have the entertainment, we have the ambition, we have the enthusiasm. We have it all, my friend. You know, I'm getting a lot of viewers when I come out here. Maybe I should have like my own television channel live in the Strip. Yeah! 24/7, approaching random people. Yeah! Oh, yeah! Everybody, let's sing with me! I don't know if I should do this song, but you know, it's kinda interesting. You got here. Are you happy? And you know, clap your hands. Yeah, there's not much going on. I can tell you what. There's really not much going on. They don't have any memorials. They don't have any events. Unfortunately, I thought there was gonna be something, but they didn't really have anything, so... Oh, holy goodness gracious, the wind is blowing! Can you believe it? Earlier in the day, it was like 90 degrees, and then the temperature just crashed down to 65 and it's windy. It makes you want to think, does this area ever have perfect weather? Or perfect weather days? Ah, who am I kidding? The weather here is pretty good. Yeah, I couldn't find any visuals tonight. I don't know where it's at. But I'm just gonna be touring this area. So, we're just gonna take a look and see what is going on. Yeah? Isn't this nice or what? There's a lot of activity going on at this time of the night. Wow! There it is, the Cosmopolitan, all these other hotels. I was thinking of the hotels would be trimmed down for, during the day, but apparently not. I mean, they usually have birthdays, so, you know, I can tell you that. Hello? Is there any visuals? You know, I'm about to lose. Is there any visuals? Like, any visuals for one week anniversary? You guys know? No? It'll look very pretty, by the way. Sure. Yeah, I, I, I didn't know of anything, so... So, let's take a look. And you can see here, we're just gonna go up the escalator and then I'll call this, I'll end this video pretty soon. So, as you can see, it's kind of a interesting scenario. If you stay tuned, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attend future events. I'm gonna go to city and county council meetings. I'm gonna be doing that. By the way, when I talked to that girl, she was pretty, she had braces on, but suddenly she had braces on. It looked, kinda looked like she was 17, but then she was pregnant! And I'm like, what is a pregnant doing here in Las Vegas? Seriously? Like, you come, I mean, okay. All right, I, I, I should basically, maybe she's around. This is the thing, like, you gotta understand, like, when you're, when you're, when you're talking, when you're talking, uh... When you're talking about women behind their backs, you gotta understand that, uh, you know, they could be watching. Apparently that girl probably listened to me, cause I was actually... Believe it or not, I was, she, she, she was waiting in the bus stop. Holy crap! So, anyway... As you can see here, you know, and you can say a lot of garbage you want about Las Vegas, but you know what? I can tell you that so many levels this means other states and other parts of the country. Can you believe that they're not gonna have their taxes high? I mean, many of you guys would rather live in California. Holy shit! It's blowing like crazy, 25, 30 miles an hour. And I actually, I actually live in Centennial. I live in the northwest part of the city. And the winds are blowing even more. I mean, this is absolutely insane! You know? Oh my goodness. Unbelievable. Look at all this. Unbelievable. Woo! I love the wind. You know what? A way I can get attention here is I can be very expressive, have enthusiasm, make exciting speeches. Wow, look at you guys! Nice!
You too!
You mind if I film?
You too.
Okay, yeah! Yeah! Oh, man, this place is so fun. This is so great. Oh, look at this! They're all cheering for those guys wearing those suits. You know, I haven't ever wore a suit here, but I should do it often. I'm gonna come out here, buy like thousand-dollar suits and just walk around and have a Rolex. I'm gonna be a king here. It's gonna be amazing. And then when I, when I wear these nice clothes, when I wear these nice clothes, I tell you what. Yeah! Yeah, when I wear these like nice clothes and stuff, I'll make these exciting speeches and presentations right around here. And then you know what? People will just approach me. I'll just get the attention. I'll get everything what I want. And I don't really need... I, I just don't even need to be like...
Beautiful. What's up?
Yes, hey, what's up? How's it going? Woo! Oh, wow, did you see them? They were like, they were like, a lot of tattoos! You know, around here, people have lots and lots of tattoos. The thing is, I come here usually during the winter, and I don't see a lot of tattoos. Winters here are like 35 degrees outside, 45 degrees. They just cover it all up, man. This is the thing right here. You know, I tell you what. Wow, I'm getting a lot of viewers here in the live video. I should be like my own alternative media for Las Vegas right here. I should be live on the Strip every day of the week. I get a lot of viewers, my friend. I get a lot of viewers. And I should present. I should make jokes. I should make speeches. I should present my beautiful master plan urban development projects. I get a lot, a lot of fame and attention here. I tell you what. Yeah, that's right. I want to build stuff here in Las Vegas, long-term. I want to bring
Titty Bar, Titty Bar, Titty Bar.
Yes, what is it? What, what Titty Bar?
All of them.
Oh! Thank you. Thank you. Oh, look at this. Look at this, they give me this Hustler Club, whatever it is. Ah, forget it. I don't fall for this stuff. What's the point of going to these places, man? I just wanna be myself. Just be myself and I'll get the attention what I need. You know? It's so much easier to be a celebrity or a star here in Las Vegas than it is in Hollywood. I'll tell you that. Absolutely. Hello?
Hello!
Hello?
How you doing?
How's it going?
Pretty good!
Awesome, yeah!
Utah!
Okay, gotta be easy on the filming, 'cause everybody wants to be filmed, so... This is why I filmed the Strip, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna violate anybody's privacy. How's it going? Beautiful, beautiful day. It's like 70 degrees. Last hour was blowing and it was windy. Can you believe it? You gotta love the weather out here. The weather here, it's like 90 and hot, and then it just cools down to 60 degrees and it's windy and blowing. Now that's what I call the best climate of the, really, in, 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 in the entire country. Probably in the entire world, I'll tell you that. Hey! Uh, you see one of those two guys right over there. See? Now, it's not as crowded, believe it or not. I, I don't know what to tell you. So... Wait, wait, what, what do you want me to respond to you, Aria? Did you, did you, di- di- are you telling me I should go to a strip club? Bullshit! I'm not going to these places, man. I don't do that stuff. I keep, I keep things pretty classy. I keep things pretty well-done, you know? Escalators are not working. Oh my gosh. Unbelievable. You know the problem? By the way, the, 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 the problem with this horrible, disgusting tragedy, you know, believe it or not, is that Mandalay Bay was supposed to open another tower. Did you know that? They wanted to open another tower. They wanted to open, like, probably like, another high-rise hotel development, but they didn't. That sucks. And now they'll probably delay the project. They should open another nice super tower, 60, 70 stories with condos, more convention, but guess what? It's gonna, it's gonna take several, several years to happen. Well, maybe I'll change the game. I don't know. All right, everybody. All right, say hello to Ozzy, Aria, and Alyssa. Okay? Yay! All right. And if you got any last-minute words? And if you got any last-minute words? Okay, other than that, everybody, take it easy, stay safe, and we will do everything we can. We're gonna do everything we can to make Las Vegas the greatest city on earth. Yes, we will. We're gonna keep working hard. I'll be at the county meetings, I'll be at city council events. I'm gonna present my beautiful mega projects. In the next 10, 20, 30 years, this will be even greater than ever. I know. I'm working on it. Plans, stock market investments, yes, stock market investments do. That's why I'll never play one dime of my money in the casinos. Stock market pays out way better than the casinos. Hell, yeah. Wall Street is a better experience than Las Vegas. I'll tell you that, okay? All right, well, anywhere between 10, 20 years. Who knows? Worst-case scenario, 30 years, but I hope not. All right, everybody, take care.